I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item C, adjustments to the agenda.
Yes, for the members of the board, we have a couple of recommended adjustments. One would be to add item two under New Business Day, discussion and consideration of out-of-state trip, and to renumber two through eight to two through nine. Also, for item seven, remove consideration of recommendation for administrative position and replace with discussion and consideration of placing the HCTC Carpentry Program on hold for the eighteen-nineteen school year.
I make a motion to add number two, discussion and consideration of the out-of-state trip, to renumber two through eight to two through nine. And number seven, remove consideration of recommendation for administrative position and replace with discussion consideration of placing HCTC Carpentry Program on hold for the eighteen-nineteen school year.
A second?
Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, five-oh. Item D, approval of minutes for April tenth, two thousand and eighteen.
I move that we approve the minutes of the April tenth, twenty-eighteen, school board meeting.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor? Five-oh. Item E, communications and correspondence.
I distributed two letters of resignation that came in since our last meeting. I'll cover those in my report.
Thank you. Item F, public participation. Item G, administrative board reports. Mr. Clifford.
Good evening, you have my report. Tonight, I brought props and a lot of students and a lot of faculty members and parents. So it's the end of the year and a lot of celebrations going on as far as accomplishments this spring. I want to start with our salutatorian and valedictorian. If Fiona Tucker and her parents could come on up? So Fiona Tucker is our salutatorian. Fiona is graduating with a one-hundred-point-zero-nine grade point average and will attend Christopher Newport University in Virginia next fall. Fiona will graduate with a VPA diploma designation, participating in show choir and many theater performances. She will also receive an honors diploma. She's the daughter of Jody Wolford Tucker and Stephen Tucker of Ellsworth. And valedictorian, Krista Willette and her parents, please come on up. Krista is graduating with a one-hundred-point-one-five grade point average and will attend Colby College in the fall. Krista is a talented actress and has participated in fall musicals. One act plays and is a very good artist. She will receive an honors diploma also. She's the daughter of Lorraine and Chris Willette of Ellsworth. And you're gracious enough to approve out-of-state trips, so I brought three of them with us tonight. First, we'll start with our one-acts. So they were state champions this year, the only state champion we've had so far during the school year of two thousand seventeen-eighteen. And they performed in the New England Festival also. So members of the one-act play, come on up.
About half of them are in another rehearsal right now. And Jasmine herself is in a rehearsal for a show she's in tonight. So she prepared something for me to read, so pretend I'm Jasmine. It's not a stretch, no, stretch and all, okay? And then a couple of the kids have some things, specific things to share as well. The experience of attending the New England Drama Festival was a fantastic and unique one for the Mad Jesters. She's been waiting literally like twenty-eight, twenty-seven years to do it. Two schools from each New England state are represented in the spirit of a true festival as theatrical productions are presented without being scored by a rubric or adjudicated by professionals. Instead, the students are trained to analyze and critically assess the work they see. They're then put into small groups to facilitate student forums where they can share their thoughts and ideas and ask questions of both performers and technicians. These forums were highly effective in educating our students both critically thinking about what they'd seen as well as constructively articulating and communicating their thoughts. In addition to the forums, students attended workshops hosted by UNH and Plymouth State College. The variety of topics for these workshops was staggering. A small sample of the sessions students attended included how to read a light plot, stage management, developing social justice in theater, stage combat, ballet for actors, making puppets come alive, and many more. Beyond the educational instructional component, the Mad Jesters were able to connect with students from all over New England who share their passion for the performing arts. Throughout the course of the weekend, I, Jasmine, watched them have animated and thoughtful conversations about the programs and communities they come from. As a director, I attended my own forum and this was a tremendous experience for me. To be in a room with other educators and hear about the challenges, triumphs, and variety of other programs was both informative and inspiring. During the forum about Ellsworth High School's production, a director from another school gave the following feedback. "May I just say, I had the opportunity to sit and talk with your students about their show and their program. I have never encountered such a lovely group of young people who are so polite and so generous with their thoughts. They are clearly being well-trained and understand their show. This is a testament not only to the program these students participate in, but their commitment to upholding EHS's standard of being contributing members of society as well as exemplary ambassadors of our school. We can't thank you enough for your support of our attendance to this festival. I believe both the adults and the students involved walked away from the experience invigorated and inspired with a new appreciation for the program and the community we have in Ellsworth. These students created an exceptional piece of theater that was widely praised. The state of Maine was certainly well-represented and it was clear to all that the performing arts programs here are thriving." So now, I believe Ian Brenner Simpson is going to tell you about something.
I've been assigned to talk about the student forums that we did briefly. So these forums were all student-run, student-based. We had directors of the forums from each school. We had representatives from each school, each team. And after each segment of shows throughout the day, we'd come together and discuss what we'd seen. We went around and said, describe the show in one word, first word that came to our head, which was kind of difficult sometimes. And then we asked the cast members, the representatives, questions and they asked us questions. It was a really interesting setup. We didn't have that opportunity at the other competitions, regionals and states. So it was nice to be able to talk directly to some of the cast members. A few of the shows didn't have actual, like, actors in the forum. They had, you know, tech crew. So it was neat to see, you know, maybe someone who doesn't know anything about the show, but they're in the back. So when you'd ask them questions, you know, they wouldn't have the answers. So that was cool, that was interesting. And then we got to talk about our own show after our section of shows. And it was really just a wonderful experience to be able to hear their thoughts, ask them questions, and discuss it with people who are all sharing the same interests. So it was a great experience for me.
Emma Henry? Hello, I was asked to talk about the Student Congress. Two representatives from each troupe were asked to join in a discussion about how the festival is run and how to improve it. I thought it was a very collaborative effort. There was a representative from Rhode Island, an adult that kind of oversaw the meeting and prompted us with questions and topics to speak about. Because the New England Festival is rotating, it cycles through each state in New England. So that was really interesting. We all had, like, all of the different schools had their own thoughts. A lot of them had experienced the show, like, the festival before and we hadn't. So it was very interesting to see what feedback they had for the festival.
So I wrote a little thing, but I probably won't use it. I was asked to speak about the value of seeing other student shows from other states, other schools. And I was thinking about how it's very different from seeing a play put on by, like, community theater or professional actors because as you're watching, you understand exactly what it feels like to be in their shoes. And you know how long it must have taken them to choreograph a certain set change. And you know the kinds of bonds that they all have with each other. You can actually see kind of their own relationships outside of their characters as they're on stage because you know what that's like because you've experienced it yourself. And it was also really cool because we got to talk about the shows with them after we saw them and to hear their feedback and to give them feedback was really great because at times we'd have questions about what their shows meant and they were able to tell us right there. It was also very nice to watch all these other shows and laugh and see something new, especially after practicing and analyzing our own show for so long to kind of be able to step away from that and watch theirs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this group is the first state champions for one-act play, so unbelievable accomplishment. So next, and I need to really thank Carrie Cutney, our Spanish and gifted and talented teacher. Last year, probably about winter time, she came to me with some ideas of trips to Europe that other schools were doing and something that we should look into. And, you know, just to gain some more experience and wonderful experience for our students here. And she started right away putting this together and a lot of time on her own and fundraising and things like that and put this together and had around thirty kids that participated. And so I just wanted them to report back to you on their experience when they went to Europe over spring break. So Mrs. Cutney and her students?
Hi, thank you so much for having us tonight. And thank you so much for approving this trip and letting us go. I know it's a really big quantum leap once you cross an ocean. And I appreciate that trust. And I'd like to thank Dan Clifford too for being so supportive. We had a fantastic trip. I was so pleased with the students and how well-behaved they were and respectful as well as brave and curious, which is a big quantum leap for them to try new food and to be jet-lagged and to still troop through the museum and see all the things that they saw and experience all these different things. Some of them had never been on the subway before. So even just the urban change of being in a city like Paris or Madrid from Ellsworth, in addition to the foreign factor, was a huge experience for all of them. One thing I really think is extremely important to note is how well they treated each other. They looked out for each other, they were good to each other. There was no crazy teenage drama. That was so exciting to me, to have twenty-nine kids on a bus being so good to each other and having this amazing experience. I will say, my favorite part of the trip was we went to the top of the Eiffel Tower at night so we could see all the lights. And I was the last one to go up so I could, you know, make sure everyone was there. And when I got to the top, several students were weeping. And I was not expecting that. And we all ended up weeping and it was just really amazing. I've never had that experience as a teacher before to see students weeping over something so exciting. So that's what I wanted to tell you. I'll let them tell you the rest. I also have, I'm a data freak, I admit. So I did surveys, so I do have some feedback from both parents and from students. So I'll let you guys look at these afterwards if you would.
Thank you. So Will, would you like to start?
Sure. I really enjoyed the trip. Like she said, there were no real big incidents or anything really bad that happened. It was really informative and a real eye-opener getting to go to these other countries and see the other cultures and getting to try all the new foods and do everything that we did over there. It was a different experience that I don't think many of us would have gotten in a long time or possibly ever if we hadn't gone on this trip. Because we got to go to these countries and we got to pack in so much exploring and trying new things into such a short amount of time. It was just a really good experience.
I'm actually very thankful to be able to go on this trip because I probably won't go there ever again on my own. So it was very, I enjoyed the experience a lot and getting to see the other cultures and like the Eiffel Tower was really amazing. And I think that the trip was very worthwhile and a good experience.
I think the trip was like an amazing experience that some people only have like once in a lifetime, can happen to them. We did like so much during the trip that's still kind of hard to like wrap my head around it. I learned so many new things about Europe and just, we saw so much and it was just an incredible experience.
I have a quick, I have a quick, I have a quick question for the students. If you could each, this is a one-word answer for this question, but what is your favorite food that you had never before tried? Jack?
Octopus.
Octopus, yeah.
Nice.
Will?
Churros with chocolate.
Oh, wow, churros.
Churros with chocolate.
I actually had octopus too.
Yep. That's one of my favorite foods. I went, I was in Barcelona during Christmas break and I had pulpo, they call it there, at least four times. Great, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, yeah, we really appreciate it. Marvel.
And the last trip that you approved is show choir at Disney. And special thanks to Rebecca Wright for organizing this again. And I know it's been around twenty years that they've, she's done this every other year. And, you know, she'll be dropping the reins off to somebody else that we hire in the next few weeks, hopefully. And so this was kind of like her last hurrah, but I'm sure she'll still be involved. And she brought some students also, talk about that trip.
We're a little more impromptu. Obviously, this is not the whole show choir. I knew some of them were going to be here, so we kind of left it at that. So yes, we went to Florida again. And this trip was probably one of the best ever in terms of the students. Kindness is the best word I have to describe it. And their behavior, they were in bed before we ever knocked on those doors. It was just, they were so good, so respectful. It was just a wonderful trip. And the weather was perfect. And they got superior ratings in their competition. And certainly not everybody gets superior ratings, for sure. So we were really, really pleased with that. We almost got rained out, blown out, lightning, thunder. And it just, every time gives us that perfect little window of weather that we were able to perform out on the waterside stage. And then boom, it started coming down in torrents. So we managed to get at that, which was really, really good as well. We have, I'll let any of them, if you want to say anything about the trip. We have two veterans and two newbies on the trip. And on Wednesday, May twenty-third, we just scheduled our very final performance, which is going to be called Disney Dazzle Night. And it's going to be all Disney numbers that they perform. And this is a night where they can choose and do duets and solos and whatever they want. And they're also going to do their number from their Broadway workshop, which is called Tangled. It's from, it's from Tangled, what is the name of that? I never remember. I've Got a Dream. It's the thug, they all get to be thugs in that one, which is great fun. And they're also performing their final performance of Dance to the Music, which was our showpiece. So that's at seven o'clock on Wednesday, the twenty-third. And we're just taking donations at the door, so. Any of you want to say? Go, Ian.
And they cry when they see the Disney Tower.
I am the only pit member here. And I just wanted to say something about the workshop. It was amazing for me. I'm not the most outgoing out of everyone in show choir. So, you know, we went and we did this workshop. We basically learned a whole scene of the show in like, what was it, like, three hours? And it was, it was to show us how a mock audition would be for, you know, actually getting a gig as, you know, a role in a show. They cast us, they auditioned, it was amazing. Especially for me, someone who wouldn't experience that ever, to see what theater people go through. And then also, I mean, Disney was Disney. So it was awesome, yeah.
No, silent. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's my report, yeah.
Before you go, I would just like to say, I had the pleasure of watching all three trips via Facebook. I had the right friends to be able to see all the pictures that were shared home. I thought, looked like everyone was having a wonderful time. And all the comments were exactly what you said, what great representation we had from Ellsworth and the surrounding communities. I'd just like to publicly thank all of the parents and chaperones and teachers and directors who made these trips possible for our students because it's just a tremendous experience that you've offered to them.
I'll second that.
Mr. Newitt?
Let's see if he can top that.
I have no show and tail, I have no props. But you have a nice report. In school news, we had our spring concert last Wednesday. Both Mr. Edmondson and Mrs. Kellogg directed our two bands and our chorus and they did a great job. The sound is really coming up. Tomorrow, we have an interesting thing we've never done before. It's our first-ever fifth-grade graduation from fire department training, which is something that has gone on for years, but there hasn't been a formal acknowledgement of the work the kids have done. So that'll be taking place first thing tomorrow. Grade seven has two field trips planned this month. One is a traditional trip to the Cole Museum where they actually interview veterans about whatever war that they had served their country in. And then they come back and write a piece about that. So it's very powerful for the kids to walk into a room full of veterans and they, three or four kids to each veteran and they take notes and have questions. I've been once, it is quite something. The second field trip is using our local resource, Woodlawn, which we also do on an annual basis with regard to their Field Day at Woodlawn, which students will rotate to very various science and social studies stations for a learning experience, which we greatly appreciate that. In co-curricular news, all of our baseball, softball, and track teams have done really well out of the gate, game yesterday, game today. We also have Ms. Small running intramural softball for those that aren't on a team. This past Saturday, we hosted a robotics track meet and our robotics team did very well. We took two second-place finishes and had thirteen kids receive ribbons for meeting the standard in a particular event, whether it's a speed or how many ping-pong balls a robot can throw into a box, that kind of thing. But the kids have worked for months preparing these robots to do these, I'll call them tricks. And they did a very nice job. Thank you, Mr. Ford, for that. Speaking of Fiona Tucker, she took ten kids this past Saturday down to Winslow to compete in the Maine Student Acting Competition. And she was there with Jasmine as well. And it's something that we've actually hosted the last two years. This time, it was Winslow's turn to host. And our kids did well there. I think we had two kids make it to the finals in the monologue competition. So that was a very nice thing. It's not on my sheet, but since Fiona's here, I'm going to say, she's also directed a play, I think that you wrote, that she wrote with about ten middle-school kids. And it's going to be performed this Friday night at six-thirty. It's her Capstone senior project. So if I had a spotlight, I'd be shining it right over, right over there. Continue with the theater theme. We have Willie Mocker Jr., which is our spring musical. That's going to be taking place the evenings of June seventh and ninth. We won't do it on the eighth in the evening because of high school graduation, but our kids will see it that morning. In the parent news, we had, our school celebrates parent, teacher, friend, parent, excuse me, National Teacher Appreciation Week a week early. And we did that last week. And Kelly was there like a lot. But the PTF puts on two breakfasts for the staff. And it's a really, really nice spread. The teachers feel very much appreciated. Can't thank PTF and they're also, because we, they're also treating us to ice cream for Morton's move this Friday. So thank you, PTF, we appreciate that. I've also met with parents of the eighth-grade class throughout the year, about a meeting per month. And the end-of-the-year events such as graduation, the class trip, we do a reception for teachers and then graduation itself. Doesn't really happen without the parents helping out. And there's a very nice core group that does it. But then for like all the things we need for the dance, many, many parents are pitching for that. So I do appreciate everything the parents have done. Yesterday, we held the first volunteer parent training meeting for the first time in a while. I got to run that, it was thirty-three people there. I got to make a lot of reference calls. But I don't mind that a bit because it's going to get people in there for the Walk-A-Thon on Friday and for all the field days coming up at the end of the year. And my guess is there'll be another one scheduled. That's all I got. Thank you.
Ms. Gabionelli?
Good evening. On May second, we had a visiting author come visit our fourth grade, Josh Els. He's an author and illustrator. And he did a workshop with students and had them create their own cartoons and comic strips. And it was really engaging for students and motivating, so it was a lot of fun. On May fourth, last Friday, our Momentum Leadership Team attended their final leadership summit for this year and worked on continuing our sustainability with the work that's been done without pilot throughout the year. And on May twenty-first, we'll be recognizing approximately fifteen third- and fourth-grade students. Those announcements will be going out this week of our recipients for the two thousand eight Frenchman Bay Future of Maine College Aspirations Scholarship. So that's really exciting, fifteen students are going to be recognized. Parent news, literacy night was tonight. Just came from there and we had a fantastic turnout. Thank you, PTF. Brian Estes is fantastic. So it was nice to see all the parents and kids come out to see him perform tonight. Our spring book fair is going on and parent night was there too. We had a great turnout tonight as well for that. And our fourth-grade concert will be taking place next week on May ninth. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bowles?
Good evening. Caterpillar Clubhouse had its preschool open house last week. And we currently are at sixteen students, which is good for this time of year, ten in the morning and six in the afternoon. If anyone out there would like to register their three- or four-year-old for part-time preschool, please contact myself or Megan Stubbs. Our law enforcement students had their pepper spray training this past Friday in thanks to the contributions of Bar Harbor Police and Tim Plant. And the Ellsworth Police Department also provided TASER training at that time as well so that students could learn about the hazards of TASER as well. They've also been learning about OUI enforcement and traffic accident stops as well in law enforcement. Our health occupations program has been very busy. They went to Verona Island and went to Down East Community Acupuncture last week. And as part of their health occupations unit, learned all about the different types of careers and the science of acupuncture. They also, for the first time, our second-year students did a collaboration with the CNA Adult Ed Program at Seaport and showed them their resumes that they've been doing. A lot of them are already working as current CNAs. So there was some collaboration that went on and they were able to share some of their... of their experiences as they're already working in the field. I want to give a shout-out to our students in our multimedia design program and to Ben Speed for the time they put into every fifteen minutes. Um, those eight students, uh, filmed and photographed the two days of every fifteen minutes. And after the mock accident, that first night stayed until nine-thirty, ten o'clock, some of them, that night, editing the video for the funeral and getting everything ready for the next day. And that's all just done on a volunteer basis. Um, so we're very proud of them as always. Um, thanks to our Melmat Grant, we're able to offer our third annual Opportunities Fair Thursday, May seventeenth. Uh, this is a great event when both post-secondary and community businesses come in and set up booths for our students to learn about different job opportunities that are available to them during the summer and upon graduation, as well as post-secondary opportunities as well. We also are able to do our third annual senior barbecue for our seniors as well, um, to celebrate our seniors as they get ready to graduate. It's one of our only big events that we do for specifically our seniors. We are currently continuing our fundraising to go to Louisville, Kentucky for this, uh, National Skills USA Competition. We're currently at about seventeen thousand dollars, which is pretty good, um, for this time. If anyone has, um, anything they would like to donate for our raffle, um, big or small, we are accepting donations to do a big raffle coming up. Um, our next big fundraiser is Thursday, May tenth. Um, so this Thursday, we are doing our annual pasta dinner from five to seven. Um, you can come anytime between those two hours, and it's by donation. And we're planning a variety of different types of lasagna, garlic bread, and salad. Uh, Mrs. High is currently very busy administering the seniors their senior acuplacer exams. Um, that is the individual student data we use for our students in the area of reading and math and writing. Um, in addition, our students will start gearing up over the next couple of weeks to take all of their third-party assessments as well. Finally, um, I have sent to you two different charts for enrollment, um, so that you could see what enrollment looked like for the fall. Um, currently at two-fourteen, I did have, um, MDI contacted me today about three new applications that should be coming over the next week. So, we are in a great deal of flux. Has, students are meeting with guidance counselors to select their courses for next year. We often pick up a couple, lose a couple. So, these numbers will be in flux over the next few weeks, and anticipate that I will send you an updated enrollment import, enrollment report in June. Um, but I did a breakdown by program as well as by high school. Um, we did have a little bit of an uptick in the Blue Hill area between the Blue Hill Harbor School and GSA, and we're working with them to uptick that a little more possibly for the fall as well. Um, so that's very good, and working hard with Naraguis as well. There's a little uptick there as well. So, um, overall, pretty stable, um, with our programming, with the exception of a couple that we keep an eye on. Any questions?
Tell us again the date of the pasta dinner.
Thursday night.
This Thursday.
This Thursday, from five to seven.
All right.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Eenee.
Ms. Carmen Ramos. Annie, Ms. Tarjen, is that okay? Annie, she's not on here. So, it's nice to be here. I've been doing a lot of HISA testing, so I haven't been to the last couple of meetings. So, it's, it's a pleasure to be here. Um, I realize that we should have more extracurricular activities, because I don't have a sea of people here. But, um, we're sort of back to basics in our program. Um, although you can see from my report that we did, um, take a couple of students to the Hall of Flags, um, and our own Brian Langley was there as the speaker. He's been a real, uh, supporter of education and, and especially of adult education. So, we had a great time. Um, and the students reported it was an amazing experience. None of, neither of them had ever been to anything like that. They were terrified at first to speak to any of the legislature legislators, and they were able to see the legislature in action, go to the museum, have dinner, have a, have lunch in the cafeteria. It was a great experience for them. Um, we are offering, for the first time, a summer pre-college prerequisite class. We're offering chemistry, and we're, um, we ha, we have a lot of students who need as prerequisites algebra and biology, and fewer that need chemistry. Um, but the people that need it really need it. So, we decided, um, to offer that class to high school students too, with the permission of their guidance counselor and administration. So, I've actually sent information to Ellsworth High School as well as other area high schools. Um, and that's gonna be taught by, uh, Marty Dayton, um, who taught for years in the Ellsworth District. And, um, it's gonna be evenings on Tuesday, and I have a typo in here, it's Tuesday and Thursday night, um, starting June twelfth from five to seven-thirty. Um, the, there is a cost, because our classes have to be self-sustaining, at least ones that go above and beyond what we offer during the school year. And so, it's a hundred and thirty-five dollars, which is an affordable price for a class like that. Um, so if anybody has any interest in that, they should give us, give our office a call, um, or look on our website to register. They do need to meet with me. Uh, we do an assessment to make sure that their math and their reading skills are sufficient. Um, but it's, um, available to anyone. The other thing that I thought you might be interested in, um, we're thinking about data in preparing for, um, state of the schools. Um, and so, I was looking at the response to our enrichment classes, and I thought you might be interested, um, to know the answers to some of these questions. Um, how did you hear about the course that you took? We do an evaluation, an online evaluation. Um, fifty-seven percent, this surprised me, um, heard about the course from the catalog, uh, twenty percent from the website, and twenty-three percent from word of mouth. Um, is this the first course you've ever taken with adult education? And for seventy-three percent of the people, the answer was yes, which is interesting. So, we're reaching out to different people. Um, and did this course meet your expectations? Seventy-two percent said it exceeded their expectations, and twenty-three percent said it met their expectations. Um, and would you take another class with this teacher? Uh, which is an important question for me as I'm planning the future. Um, and eighty, uh, ninety-eight percent said yes. Um, and how did you feel about the administrative process, registration? Ninety-eight percent said either excellent, mostly excellent, actually, but I didn't have the time to do the dig down in the data. Um, excellent and good. Um, and friendliness, a ninety-three percent excellent and good combined. Um, clarity of details, which is our biggest challenge, because it's so hard to do all of those kind of details about, you know, how do you get the materials and all of that. Ninety-three percent, which I think is really good, given the staffing that we have, um, and the accessibility of registration, ninety-five percent. So, I would say that, uh, hats off to the instructors and our, our enrichment instructors, as well as, um, our administrative staff for everything that they do. And last, we're, we're looking for ideas for courses for next semester. So, I, you know, I'm in the planning phases now, so please let us know. But, any questions about our program in general? Chugging along. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Carmen Ramos. Good evening. Um, in curriculum news, our, uh, we've concluded our Never Stop Learning series after school for the year to allow teachers to focus on end-of-year activities and complete their instruction for students. We will, uh, resume the program as soon as school starts up again. And in the meantime, um, we have a survey that will ask for feedback from teachers about the programming they would like to see and what positive practices they'd like to share with their colleagues. We were really pleased. Um, as the program progressed, we got more and more attendees and got really good fe, feedback. Um, our Title I A Literacy Night will be held on May fourteenth at EEMS, um, from three-thirty to five next Monday. Um, and we'll feature Grayson from Bird's Acre with a presentation, as well as book giveaways and fun activities to take home to support student reading. And we look forward to, uh, many families joining us. So, we hope that people will come out for that. Um, and I was, just came from the literacy night, um, given by the PTF, and I was blown away by the attendance. It was really wonderful to see so many families doing all kinds of activities. Uh, we signed up for an Ellsworth library card, and you were able to go to the book fair and have dinner and, um, Title I activities. It was really exciting. So, um, it was fun to see. Uh, in the reading review team, um, we've reviewed surveys sent out to all ELA teachers in our district that asked questions about reading in our district. And as a result of these responses in K-three, we plan to implement a set of phonics materials that align with the Fountas and Pennell Assessment that's used in those grades starting next year, once the pro, professional development's provided. Um, our teachers have used older versions of this product before and aligned their plans, um, last summer, actually, with this phonics and word study program. Um, it's been revamped, and we'll provide short, explicit phonics lessons in grades K through three to support our students' reading challenges. So, um, really looking forward to that as a, as a next step to help, um, all the classrooms kind of be formalized in their phonics instruction. Um, in the middle school, further exploration of the teacher toolbox, um, that aligns with the I-Ready Assessment has been used in some classrooms this year and will continue this spring and over the summer. Uh, summer work with the ELA Department and the high school will support their surveyed needs through discussions and collections of resources. Uh, the comprehensive needs assessment, the, um, the assessment that was given to us to complete by the federal government and the state, um, for schools that receive, um, title funding, which we do. Um, the work on this assessment continues. Our first two planning meetings for this process were held over the last month with excellent feedback from the team members. And I'd like to thank all the members of the community and the faculty who have participated. Um, our title audit, the Department of Education visited our offices and schools on Tuesday, April twenty-fourth. They interviewed teachers and parents and administrators. Their report was positive and reflected the thoughtful and professional work being done in the schools and by our administrators. Um, I'd like to thank Jessica Freeman, Tina Young, Moira Perry, Kelly Rudolph, Colleen Mutlu, Carol McHeckern-Murphy, and Debbie Richards so much for the time that they spent, um, with me to prepare for the visit and for the excellent work they do each day. The auditors were very impressed with the work that they're doing, with the programming we're providing our students, with the materials we have, with the resources we're offering, and, um, was really honestly heartwarming just to hear their report, because they were really, um, impressed and pleased and enjoyed talking to our families and, um, our community partners. Uh, lastly, our community arts curriculum, this is our first year, and on Friday, our kindergarten and first-grade teachers and students attended a really wonderful mime and puppetry program at the Grand after working with the arts outreach educator from the Grand, Nicole Cardano, who you've seen in a presentation here before. She went into their classrooms a week before the program and worked with the students. Um, this completes a year that saw every student K through eight and many high school students attend at least one performance at the Grand. This partnership has been really exciting and has kind of revived an old partnership that we had had in the past and brought new ways of thanking to our students and new viewers to the Grand. We look forward to our continued work with Nick Turner, the director, Jasmine Ireland, the educational program director, and Nicole Cardano next year to continue this program that brought students to the arts and the arts to our students. Any questions?
Thank you.
Superintendent's report, Mr. Higgins.
I think it's my turn. Good evening, everybody. Uh, first, as you know by the, uh, amendment to the agenda, the Principal Screening and Selection Advisory Committee, with their intent, uh, was to bring forward a successful candidate for the EMS principal position. Uh, the committee requires additional time to complete the final steps. Uh, part of a thorough, thorough and thoughtful process, uh, as you know, sometimes it comes along with challenges, so your ideal timelines don't always work, getting in touch with references and determining whether or not to do another round of interviews. Uh, the committee continues at work, its work, and we are hoping to, uh, be asking the board to convene a special meeting on the date of your next workshop to bring that successful candidate forward. Um, another meeting that was held that I'd like to provide an update on is, uh, a meeting that was held with Hancock County Superintendents, Principals, and Law Enforcement's, uh, officials from across Hancock County. I mentioned this to you at our last meeting. This is a follow-up to an initial meeting with regard to school safety and security, in particular, responses to the armed intruder scenario. On April twenty-seventh, um, Superintendent's, Principals, and Law Enforcement heard a presentation provided by Southwest Harbor Police Chief Alan Brown, who was presenting on behalf of all, uh, Hancock County Law Enforcement officials. Um, his presentation was on, uh, a different protocol other than the one we use in our schools now. Uh, it was a very informative, um, and interesting presentation that prompted several questions. It was very thought-provoking. The purpose of that was to get that information out to all school systems across, uh, Hancock County, so that we could use that information in our work over the next couple of months, you know, not only reviewing our plan, but potentially revising it. While we are hoping that it will continue to be collaboration across the county and on a regional basis to the extent possible, there are some decisions, particularly around this particular topic, that are likely to vary from district to district and in some cases, school to school. Uh, the next steps for our school department are to meet with our local, uh, law enforcement, um, in particular, Chief Glenn Mosher, uh, to talk about what we saw in the presentation and determine how it may fit with our emergency planning. Also, Chief Mosher has received additional training in, um, review of emergency management plans. Uh, so I think it'll be an informative process for us. Once we continue that particular meeting, we'll expand our conversation in Ellsworth to include other, uh, public safety entities. Um, as you know, you're required every, uh, year to review and update, um, that policy and that, uh, plan. So, you will be seeing that coming forward over the next couple of months. As always, we like to provide a legislative update. Usually, at this time of year in the second session, you'd like to report that the legislature has adjourned and all their work is completed. Well, that's partially true. The legislature has adjourned, but their work is not completed. Um, there are a couple of bills in particular that, uh, can affect education. One is LD eighteen-sixty-nine, which is known as an Act to Establish the Total Cost of Education and the State and Local Contributions to Education for FY two thousand eighteen-nineteen. What this bill essentially does is sets the minimum mill rate and authorizes state subsidy to go up to schools after July first. Even though the legislature in their first session, um, approved funding for s, public education, this particular bill in the second session has to be approved so that, number one, we know how much money we have to send to Augusta, but they'd be authorized to send us money beginning in July first. Um, at this point in time, uh, that hasn't taken place. The other education bills relate to the ongoing transition that you've heard about to proficiency-based, uh, diploma instructional model. There remain several competing bills out there, LD sixteen-sixty-six, LD eighteen-ninety-eight, and LD nineteen-hundred that are on this topic, and they range from maintaining the status quo, amending the current law, and one of the bills deals with repealing the current law. I can assure you that Hancock County Superintendents have been in contact with our legislators, requesting that they support the calling of a special session to address these important bills. Uh, in my conversations with Senator Langley, um, my understanding is there will be a special session called. The question is, when is that going to happen? Uh, certainly, we will continue to advocate for that, because it's important. Um, do we have letters of resignation, uh, that I mentioned earlier? And one was from Audrey Herbert, custodian at the middle school, and one from, uh, Shelton Pierce, a special education teacher at Ellsworth Elementary Middle School. And this is not just for you, but also for members of the viewing public who might be looking for a teaching job. We have a number of vacancies that we're still trying to fill. A science teacher at the high school, an eighth-grade teacher in social studies and science at the middle school, physical education teacher at Ellsworth Middle School, a library media specialist at the high school, and a special education teacher at Ellsworth Elementary Middle School. And unless you have questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item H is committee reports. I'm assuming we'll hear from Policy when it's time to deal with the policies.
Policy has not met this month.
Okay.
So, we do have some second reads, but no new first reads.
Anyone else?
Now, personnel was, um, adjusted in Dan's report.
Item I, old business, we have none. Item J, new business, staff presentation.
Yes, very, very pleased tonight. You know, you saw a number of students come through here and be recognized. Uh, this evening, we're very pleased to have, um, Mr. Saunders and our, uh, transportation staff, uh, come and join us. Uh, Mr. Saunders, would you come to the podium and explain why we've asked you to come tonight? And you know, we're also gonna ask all of our drivers to come forward and be introduced. You guys knew that that was coming, didn't you?
That's, uh, that's why so many sat near the door. Well, we, uh, this is a group of people that I've worked with for the last three years. Uh, this year, I've been their supervisor, uh, transportation supervisor, and to tell you... This year, I've been their supervisor, transportation supervisor, and to tell you, I can't think of working with a better group of people. We lost our mechanic and driver, Earl Gillie, on the 13th of December. That same day, I was diagnosed with influenza and bronchitis and ended being out of work for a month, and these people did the job. Before I went out, Mike Cummings says, you know, if something happens to you, someone here needs to be the trail boss. Meet the trail boss. He handled things for that entire month. I took phone calls. Dan said it best. He says, you're either really good at what you do, or we really don't need you. And we were able to stay afloat. We have, over the last year, statistics for 2017, our buses traveled 156,174 miles. 26,907 was for sporting events. We went out on co-curricular trips for 3,065 miles and field trips for 2,871 miles. Our school-to-school mileage for 2017 was 21,102 miles. It's interesting that all the groups that presented to you this evening, with the exception of the show choir, we transported. Since January 1st, we've traveled 62,713 miles on 9,207 gallons of fuel, and that works out to about 6.7 miles the gallon, which is about as good as you can expect from a school bus. We met this morning at 6:00 for our usual driver meeting, and I asked the question, how many years have you been driving? And I have a list here, but when we added it all up, these drivers represent 339 years of driving experience. The top four was Jackie Wyatt. Stand up, Jackie. Yeah, she's been driving 46 years of school bus. Mo Young, who's come back to us as a spare driver nonetheless, he's been with us for 45 years. Roger Keen, who's out on a trip tonight with one of the ball teams, 45 years. And Nikki Pearson has been with us for 45 years driving school bus. Throw those people in the hat and shake them up, it comes out to 181 years, just those four folks. Now, the other folks that we have working for us include Mike Cummings. Mike does the route up through Otis and down through the Gary Moore Road. Nikki Pearson is in charge of the Bayside Road, Beachland, and Buttermilk Road. Peter Remick, who is not with us tonight, we hired as a full-time spare driver, and he basically is doing Earl Gillie's old run through Winkin' Paw and Happy Town. Dan Moss, who isn't here, is in charge of the in-town portion of the Bucksport Road, as far out as Gilbert Welderling. Joyce Young, stand up there, Joyce. Joyce runs up the Bangor Road and does the, what's the name of that road you do, Joyce?
The Nicole.
The Nicole and Road.
Yes.
And in the past, the Nicole and Road has been problematic. I was able to get together with the head of the highway and let it be known that she goes down there at 20 minutes a seven, and they were operating under the premise that she didn't go until 7:00. So, the road was always horrible. But after I called and made that call, Joyce, what happened?
Much better.
She followed the sand truck in, in the morning. We had Roger Keen, he does the run out the Surrey Road. Jackie Wyatt takes care of things up Route 179, as far as the Waltham Town Line. We've done some things with the RSU transportation folks because of our late Friday adjournment. RSU 24 didn't do that, and so we've been transporting 10 of their students up to the town line where they meet their bus as more or less a help to them. Mo is driving bus number 13, which is the bus he drove for years and years and years, and I have him come in to cover because that's the bus that I'm supposed to be driving, but find it a whole lot better to be in the shop in case things don't go quite right. The new group that we are now responsible for, that have come to the bus garage, are our special ed van drivers. They were at the high school tucked away in the dark. No one ever really saw what they did. We brought them over to the bus garage and gotten them new uniforms, like the rest of us have, and we have Angela Carney, who basically does a lot of the administrative assistance stuff with that. We have Greg Dow. He does a lot of the transportation to kids piece. Lumen Finney, he's been doing a lot of the runs back and forth to Brewer, and he took me with him today, and after we were done dropping a student off at Brewer, he took me to Cedar Bus Lines and we picked up a rental bus that's ours for the remainder of the school year. We've been lucky enough to be able to beg, borrow, and steal. RSU 24 has been wonderful. We have a free swap agreement with them where if we need a bus, we go down and if it's available, we're able to use it. All we've got to do is clean it up and top the fuel tank off before we take it back, and they can come and ask us for a bus if we have one, but that's been a problem. And I've been able to establish a relationship with Andrea Brown in Sargentville, and we borrowed one of her buses today because we had four trips going out, two buses that we owned. So, the trip still went, and that's something that I'm pretty proud of, the fact that we haven't said no to anybody when it comes time to take kids out on the trip. One of the things that disappointed my crew, I think a little bit, was the fact that I required them to attend the Region III School Bus Conference sponsored by the Maine Association for Pupil Transportation. And one of the things that I required them to do was participate in the rodeo, which is when you drive through cones, maybe knock a few down. There were a number of events. There was a forward offset alley that was pretty tight, and if you didn't hit something with the front wheel, the tail swing of the bus caught a cone with the back. You couldn't stop. You had to keep moving forward. You couldn't back up without it costing you points. They had tennis balls set up about this far apart that you had to drive your right-side wheels through without hitting the balls one way or the other. They had a diminished alley that started eight feet, 10 inches wide, which is the width of the bus, plus about five inches on each side, and as you went into this alley, it gradually diminished until coming out the other end, it was eight feet, two inches, which gave you an inch on each side of the bus. The goal, of course, don't stop, don't back up, and don't hit anything. The final move was to drive up to a point where there was a line in the pavement and stop so that your front bumper was within two inches. They had us drive buses we'd never seen before, and everybody had to do that same thing. We didn't hope to do well because we didn't prepare for it. The reason we were there basically was to fulfill the Department of Education's requirement that we have behind-the-wheel training as a part of what we offer, and driving through those cones and getting a certificate for it was our behind-the-wheel training. So, it was a wonderful day. We had educational programs for our special ed van drivers as well as our regular drivers. We sat and clapped for the folks that had individual awards that they were able to attain, and we were really surprised when, at the very end, they called us up and presented us with the team award.
Nice.
For Region III, Maine Association of Pupil Transportation. So, for the first time out of the slot, I think we did pretty well. My goal, as I have said to them, is to have the best school bus operation in the state, and we're getting closer. So, thank you.
So, I had the privilege today to attend a third-grade field trip to Acadia, and I just have to say you are all saints. I could not do that every day, for sure.
Well, the field trips are pretty good because there are teachers on there. It makes sure the kids are behaving pretty well. Down the road, when we come and ask for bus monitors, we'll have you mention that again. Questions?
You forgot Drew.
Who's run?
You forgot Drew.
Drew's run. Drew does the outer end of the Bucksport Road, and he ends up over in Happy Town a little bit, which hooks on to Peter Remick's run, and Drew has done a really good job with his kids. I like to step in and drive for Drew every now and then because he's got the kids, so the thumbs-up thing works for them. And the way this works is when they get off the bus, they step up to the front and they look for a thumbs-up, to walk pathway across the street. Then they start and look again for the second thumbs-up before they actually cross the road. The problem that we've had with people running our red lights has prompted us to need to do that because they don't look both ways for traffic, and so the driver is taking on that responsibility. One thing that we accomplished last year was we were able to get a law passed where school buses are able to have wig-wag headlights. It was something that was forbidden from school buses. Police cars, fire trucks could have them, school buses couldn't. So, Louis Lucchini presented the law, and it was passed over objections of a few folks. The governor never signed it, so it became a law without his signature, and we have one bus with wig-wag headlights on it that has been doing the Bangor Road, which is where folks up there are traveling 65, 70 miles an hour, and you stop a yellow bus in the middle of the street with red lights, but if those wig-wag headlights are going, people immediately thinking, it's a cop, and they slow down enough to see, oh, my gosh, it's a school bus. So, it has done quite a lot for us, and down the road, we're looking at maybe having more of our buses equipped with that type of equipment, so.
Donnie, I see Marty Flint up there, and I know that she's driven a bus for a long time.
Marty, I called and invited her to come to this tonight, and she says, you want a sub-dub to come to the school board meeting? Well, Marty works at the high school as an ed tech, and whenever we have the need, I give Marty a call or I type out a little email, number 13 with a question mark, and it always comes back to me with a thumbs-up. And so, as soon as Mo is done driving bus 13, he drives it right over to the high school and leaves it. She comes out, gets it, puts it where she wants it, and she subs in the afternoon when I need to have Mo cover another run along the way. That's happened a lot recently. Our worst week was the week after school vacation because Nikki stayed in Florida an extra week. We had another driver, Dave McDevitt, had his sinuses worked on the Tuesday after Patriots' Day, and he was out the following week, so I was down two drivers. And then we picked up an extra special ed kid, and Angie was pulling her hair out of her head trying to figure out how we were going to get one more van to Belfast. And I found myself helping in that particular area for that week, but at the end of the week, I took that big, deep breath and said, we made it. We made it. Friday night, sat in my chair. My wife said, why do you go to sleep in that chair at night? And I told her that it was well-earned. Saturday morning, I got up thinking, nothing to do today, and I was in my pajamas at about quarter or 12 when the phone rang, and it was Josh Frost saying, where's my bus? Well, I designed Dave McDevitt to do that. He was the one that had been sick that week, but by Saturday, I figured he'd be good to go. I had called him to see if he could do something Thursday afternoon to help out, but there was a cancellation and I didn't need to have him do that. So, when I talked with him and told him that he didn't need to drive on Thursday, I closed our conversation off with have a good weekend. He took that to mean he was all set, he didn't need to drive. So, I had no one to drive that JV team to Foxcroft, and so in just about 10 minutes, I was in my clothes and in my car, and I drove that trip that day. That's the first time that's happened, and we aren't making a practice of it, let me tell you. So, we are in hopes. We see the end of the school year in sight, but this year, we had four trips that went out of state. We took the robotics team to Durham, New Hampshire, University of New Hampshire for their competition. We took the Spanish and French group down to Logan Airport to catch their flight. We went back and caught them again on their way back, brought them home, and we went with the drama group over to Guilford, New Hampshire for four days. So, we've done more out-of-state work this year than we've been since I've been here. And I'm not thinking that that's going to change. I think it probably is going to get bigger and better.
Donnie, I would like to thank you for coming in. When you came back and reported that our drivers had won the award, we thought, what a great opportunity to come and present this publicly and recognize them for their work. But as you and I were talking about doing this, we also thought this is a great opportunity to express to our drivers and to the members of our public. Mr. Saunders' goal of having the best transportation department in the state of Maine, we're really right there. When you look at the work that this group of people do on a daily basis, and that's when the weather's good, when the weather's bad, when we have a long trip, short trip, any trip, multiple trips, short of buses, what these people do to take care of our kids, getting them to and from where they need to go safely and on time, you know, we're very blessed to have the crew that we have. So, not only are we pleased to recognize you for your successes at the conference, but also to thank all of you for all the work that you do on a daily basis. And I tell you, in the middle of the winter, when I called Donnie in the morning at 4:30 and said, what do you think about the roads? His first comment is always, with the drivers we've got, I'm not all that worried.
I got one driver I didn't recognize.
You better do it.
Jimmy James.
He's sitting on the other side.
Jimmy can't wait to get in and have his name tag changed to Jimmy James because he's not real happy about his real name, although I told him that if his real name appeared on his paycheck, he might appreciate it a little better. That's it for us.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders, and thank you, and congratulations.
Item two, discussion and consideration of an out-of-state trip.
You want to stay, Donnie?
All right. Thank you.
Can you imagine 45 days?
I think so.
Well, you were hiding, Jimmy. I didn't even see you over there. Yeah, I was wondering where you were. I thought maybe you fell asleep.
Rob saw me. You paid for it.
Absolutely.
I'm doing well. How are you?
I'll strip down. I asked Donnie if I wear a pork jacket in the tie. He said, no. I was trying to outrest Paul.
You did it tonight.
See you later.
Thank you.
Good night.
So, I'm here to request permission to take our eighth grade to Kenobi Lake Park in Salem, New Hampshire. Of course, because it is out-of-state, it does require your approval. We went on this trip last year. The same situation is at hand with regard to the students have raised the money to pay the entry fee for the park, and they've also raised the money to use chartered buses, not the great buses we have, but with a long ride, we're going to, we booked with Cedar Bus Company to have a more cushy experience. So, we'd love to have your permission to do that.
I make a motion to approve the eighth grade out-of-state trip as presented.
Second? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Three, second read and approval of amended policies.
These were presented for our first read at the last meeting, and I don't believe that there are any changes. Correct, Mr. Higgins?
No changes to DIA, IGA, IHBAK, and IHBAL. The one change that you do have, and it's included in your packet, is policy JFADB, which is admission of homeless students. If you recall, the first read had incorporated into the policy language that was more befitting in a set of rules or procedures. So, what we discussed at the last meeting was, the policy committee would ask me to prepare a policy document and a separate procedures document, which is JFABDE for exhibit. So, that's what's included for your second read and approval. And that will also meet the needs of the title review that Mrs. Corbin Ramos discussed earlier. That was one of their recommendations, is that we include dispute resolution procedures.
I move that we accept second read and approve the amendments to the policies just listed as recommended by the policy committee.
Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Item four, confirmation of superintendent's nomination for second year probationary contract.
And as board members know, that the list of teachers who are recommended for nomination for a second year probationary contract will include in your packet.
I make a ma, a motion to confirm the superintendent's nomination of the following teachers as second year probationary contract for the 2018-2019 school year. Sunshine Barrett, Taylor Beatty, Melinda Boynton, Ethan Edmondson, William Firm, Heather Ford, Jessica Freeman, Stephen Hunt, Laura Johns, Sarah Kane, Whitney Moran, Emily Nash, Anna Perna, Heidi Thacker, Sarah White.
I second that.
Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Item five, confirmation of superintendent's nomination of third year probationary contract.
I move that we confirm the superintendent's nomination of the following teachers to third year probationary contracts for the 2018-2019 school year. Kate Anderson, Lindsay Bailey, Suzanne Bell, Jennifer Bernhardt, Julia Berry, Jamie Calandro, Matthew Downs, Catherine DeVore, Judith Massar, Ste, Stephane, how do you pronounce that?
Stephanie.
Stephanie McGruder, Bobby Palmer, Nicole Parity, Sarah Petoulis, Judson Raven, Deborah Richards, Teresa Richardson, Megan Sprague, and Megan Stubbs.
I second that. Discussion. All those in favor? Item six, confirmation of superintendent's nomination for continuing contract.
I would add to the members of the board that the eight teachers listed under here nominated, being nominated for continuing contract have completed three successful probationary years and are being recommended by their principals and also nominated by me. It's a pleasure to do so.
I make a motion to confirm the superintendent's nomination of the following teachers to continuing contracts for the 2018-2019 school year. Mary Michael Billings, Tricia Hamilton, Hunter Havel, Tori Kronk, Kent McLaughlin, Heidi Omler, Kayla Riordan, and Brandy Walsh.
Second.
Hearing none, all those in favor? Five oh. Item six, discussion, consideration of placing HCTC Carpentry Program on hold for the 18-19 school year.
As you know, through our work with the budgetary process this year, the advisory committee for HCTC had recommended not moving forward with the carpentry program because low numbers prevented us from having a successful two-year program. It's been three years of challenges to try to get sufficient student numbers to support a successful two-year program. So, the decision was made this year to recommend placing the carpentry program on hold for the 18-19 school year so that we could reevaluate and determine if there were ways that we could make the program revitalized and attract a greater number of students, or to look back at data that we've collected over the past couple of years in terms of student surveys and Department of Labor and determine if a different program could be used in that space. Placing it on hold for the school year prevents us from having to go through a process at the Department of Education to remove the program and then go through a similar process to bring the program back.
And Dan, what about students who are in the first year now?
Yes, we, we have included some money for supplies and materials and are seeking to provide those two students with opportunities for an internship, internship type arrangement so that they can complete their two-year program and obtain their credential.
Great.
I make a motion to approve placing the HCTC Carpentry Program on hold for the 2018-19 school year as recommended by the superintendent and support by the HCTC Advisory Committee.
Second.
Discussion.
May I also add before you vote? It has not been an easy decision for anybody to make. You know, the discussions around the table, both at the HCTC and also through the budgetary process have been challenging, to say the least. It's not a decision that we make lightly, but we think it's in our best interest. Appreciate your consideration.
We know that this is a field where we need carpenters. And it's just sort of heartbreaking to know that we don't have enough interest in the program right now to, to, to keep it going. So, thinking down the road, just remember we need carpenters and plumbers and electricians.
And I think we all hope that we can find a way to get this po, program revitalized and get the numbers in that can help sustain it.
Discussion. What was the discussion? All those in favor? I had to make consideration and approval of Elsworth School Department 2018-2019 budget and authorization to submit to the Elsworth City Council.
Have included in your packet, the numbers that were just finalized early this afternoon. Can tell you that the difference between what was presented to you in a previous meeting and what was presented to the city council in the workshop on April 30th was the determination to extend the K through three Momentum Literacy Pilot for one additional year. What that allows us to do is to continue with the good work that's being done at that level. It also allows us to take out of the budget about $25,000 that was ticketed to purchase iPads and Chromebooks so that we could maintain being a one-to-one school system, grades K through 12. The fact that we're extending the pilot allows us to utilize those iPads that were part of the pilot and also provided above and beyond the pilot by the state for an additional year. So, I would be happy to go through for the board details of what the increases are. I know we've done it at this level. We've done it at the city council. It's been well reported in the Elsworth American. Can certainly do that. And while you're pondering whether you'd like me to do that, I will say for the members of the general public, for what was presented at your last board meeting, the initial draft of the budget, which represented about a $1.47 million increase over last year, which at that time represented about a seven and a half percent increase and a well over a $1 million increase in the local assessment through the good work that's been done by our administrators and our staff. We've reduced that request to reflect a budget that, including adult education, has an increase of 3.43% over last year, which is just over $700,000. And an increase in local assessment of $272,711, which is 2.45%. You know, certainly, in these times with state funding in flux and challenges of competing resources, coming forward with a budget that has a three and a half percent increase and a 2.45% increase on the local assessment, I think is an accomplishment. It's not only allowing us to continue to provide appropriate and adequate services for our programs and for our students, it's also allowing us to address some of the needs that we've discussed throughout this budgetary process. Certainly, we all know around this table that there are other needs that we have, there are other priorities that we would like to bring forward. But I think at this time, a budget at this level provides us the best opportunity to move forward with plans to implement some of those other priorities in subsequent years. So, if you'd like me to go through the list, I can, or if I can entertain any questions.
I'm good.
I don't, I don't need you to go through the whole list, but, uh, part of the budget increase includes new, new staff to, to, in order to support increased enrollment. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. We have two new regular education teachers, one at the kindergarten level, one at the grade four level, which are specifically to address enrollment needs. There's also another teacher which we're calling a Section 504 teacher for students who are eligible under that federal law. We also have new ed tech positions under special education, an additional academics teacher at Hancock County Technical Center, and positions under our student and staff services that aren't based upon increases in enrollment, but address needs. A licensed clinical social worker, worker, excuse me, at EMS, which is a need we've been talking about for a number of years now. An increase to instructional technology staff to address the growing number of help request tickets that we have. And increase in a position, two positions actually, one an instructional coach to support our teachers moving forward with proficiency-based work, and a data staff to help ensure the integrity of our data. So, all of those positions come along, Paul, with rationale that supports their need.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to approve the Elsworth School Department 2018-2019 budget and authorize the superintendent to submit to Elsworth City Council.
I second that.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Five oh. Number nine, negotiations update.
We have nothing to report.
May I add one thing? I, I will say that the personnel committee will be starting negotiations this Thursday with, actually, our bus drivers who just departed. So, that process will begin. And on that date, we'll also be talking with the representative that supports our bus drivers about beginning that process with our custodians. So, we're, we're ready to move forward in that particular process.
Yes.
Item K, calendar and announcements, meeting schedule, policy committee meeting to be announced.
Can address that. I know what happened in the last month is with the principal search process, we needed to take a priority, not that policies aren't important, but with the committee that we had, we needed to find dates so that we could do that committee's work. So, we did bump the policy committee meeting. We have not scheduled an official date, but typically, we're trying to hold those meetings on the first Tuesday of each month. So, I'll be sending our policy committee members some dates and times for that particular week and see if we can pull the next meeting together for that date.
Okay. School Board Workshop, Tuesday, May 22nd, 2018, Elsworth School Department Conference Room at 6:00 PM. Elsworth School Meeting, Tuesday, June 12th, 2018, City Hall, Council Chambers, 6:30 PM.
And Mrs. Thomas, I, I may say, I'm wondering if we will be able to have that meeting here. I believe June 12th is the election date. So, we will be looking for another location for that meeting. Maybe at EMS or at HCTC.
All right.
To make sure public notification gets made.
Item L, adjournment.
Having no further business, I move that we adjourn the board meeting.
I second that.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Look at that, eight o'clock on the dot.